All right. Well, this being North Bend City Council work session, agenda, work session for March tenth, two thousand twenty five at four thirty in the city council.
Okay. Roll call, can you all listen to that?
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garbo, or excuse me.
I don't care.
Council President Garbo.
Eric.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Nobody's online other than Mark Wolf.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
We have no public comment either online or submitted to me.
Okay, I guess. At least kept it up. We went through, you can have four minutes.
Evening, uh, city council members. Uh, this is the time we're, uh, going to give you a presentation, uh, which was representation of the year two thousand twenty four and review and what we have, uh, accomplished, the police department and things that, uh, goals and such that we continue to work with and work on. So the first thing, obviously, in two thousand twenty four for the police department is another year of great progress, service and commitment. Uh, we made significant strides, uh, driven by the ongoing commitment to the public safety, community service and technological advancement. Uh, in two thousand twenty four, in staffing and leadership, we celebrated several important milestones. A new patrol sergeant was promoted, uh, which reinforced our leadership structure. Additionally, we successfully filled one police officer position and are nearing completion, the hiring process for two more officers currently. Uh, this again demonstrates North Bend's growing appeal, which I think is very important to underline as far as the state of the department as a desirable place to work and a positive reflection of our recruitment efforts, particularly attracting lateral officers. Uh, we further are expanding our presence in the schools. The North Bend School District provided funding for a second school resource officer who will begin in the spring of two thousand twenty five. Actually, that'll be, uh, starting here. We have meetings with, uh, the school board, uh, next week and, uh, we'll be, uh, moving along, getting him in there as the kids come back from spring break. So that's a big, uh, step, uh, again in public safety. Current North Bend staffing structure. So right now we have twelve patrol officers. Uh, we have two administrators. Our community resource officer, our school resource officer, record specialist, evidence record specialist, community service officer, with a total budget positions of nineteen. We're actually at one or striving to get to twenty right now in total, uh, with records and the unsworn positions. Um, professional development, uh, continuing along and staffing, uh, another, it's been a, a key focus of ours and will continue to be, uh, talked a little bit about what some of our officers been doing, uh, kind of, I would say somewhat in their spare time, but also just, uh, continuing to drive to uh, improve, um, professionally. And, uh, as part of some of the things that we looked at, uh, we wanted to have designated watch commanders. So these are officers that get a little bit more training as far as in supervision and they are in charge of the patrol force when the sergeant is gone on vacation or sick or for one reason or the other. And this also just allowed, allows for greater leadership depth. It also prepares for transitions in the future, uh, in filling, uh, vacant sergeant positions, uh, if and when they come up. Uh, three patrol sergeants also participated in advanced supervision, leadership and training to further enhance department operations. Uh, our field training and evaluation program remained active with two recruit, two recruits in the pipeline. Our success, uh, one successfully graduated from the DPSST Academy and is now in the field training process. That's Josh DeWatney. Uh, we also have a second recruit, uh, that'll be continuing, uh, training at the academy. We also conducted multiple training sessions in firearms, defensive tactics and TASER usage to ensure our officers remain at the forefront. Technological upgrades and equipment grants, uh, this is another huge, uh, development for the police department. Two thousand twenty four was actually pretty stellar as far as we were able to accomplish. Cloud storage partnership with Safely. This was a big, um, and I think most of the councilor members, uh, when we worked with Safely to, to get a five-year contract with them, saved us, uh, quite a bit of money, uh, in the long run on that. But the biggest thing is we're getting away from these soon to be obsolete servers in-house kind of boxes that everyone's kind of familiar with, with the stores data to the cloud. And, uh, that also has a lot of benefits on an administrative end where we can send that and give permissions to the district attorney's office. So we're not like burning DVDs and, uh, further cutting our expenses by getting away from that. Uh, the ALPRs, the automatic license plate readers, uh, have been in the car. We've had, uh, I think about four now, uh, total, uh, in our hits as far as, uh, locating stolen vehicles. But we're looking to see a lot more than that as we continue to work with the company to kind of maximize the proficiency of these devices. Uh, our speed enforcement trailers, uh, once, I'm sure had a chance to see those out there. We do have one of them that was damaged here and we're waiting to get, uh, some repairs done to that. And we'll have those back out, but they continue to be a great source for us even as as we had our tsunami warning, we were able to get emergency warning messages because those are programmable from remote. Uh, our federal and community grants, this is probably one of the most significant areas. I'm sure that everyone's interested in. So we were, we secured a fifty-six thousand dollar grant through the school violence prevention program. So this grant, uh, basically allowed us to provide a financial opportunity to the school district to purchase, uh, security and promote security in a safe learning environment in our schools by adding some of the electronic locks. So these are like key card type electronic locks to where we don't have, uh, dozens of keys for each school building that's in our area that we're responsible for. So this is going to, uh, give a quick response, a quicker response when needed for our police officers as well as just making the schools more secure. Uh, they also got, uh, not, part of that grant is to bring the DARE program back to, uh, the North Bend School District and we'll be looking at that in a kind of an expanded form from where it used to be to where this won't be just, uh, in the grade schools, but it'll also be in the middle school as well as in the high school. So the officers will be teaching classes in that. And that's going to be another nice thing that we have a second SRO now that'll be there to be able to help, help out with that mission. A hundred and twenty thousand dollar federal grant was awarded through the cops hiring process and, uh, that'll be, uh, enabling us to add the addition of the new officer to our ranks, one of the two which I mentioned earlier. The Three Rivers Foundation boarded North Bend PD a ten thousand dollar grant to purchase active shooter response kits and stop sticks. We secured fifteen thousand dollars in grant funding from the Oregon Department of Transportation for police overtime payments to work designated traffic, traffic enforcement, safety blitz, select the clicker ticket, uh, seatbelt campaigns that we have had, also DUI special enforcement. And then we will also be looking to expand that into some of the pedestrian, uh, safety, uh, crossing.
Stop sticks help with doors, right?
What's that?
Stop sticks, barricade doors.
No, stop sticks, sorry. I should, that's a good question. Stop sticks are the, what we used to call, uh, tack strips, uh, and stuff like that. So this, yeah. Yeah, go across the road and end a, uh, pursuit safely. Uh, so in our community policing initiatives, uh, we have the, uh, community resource officer continuing to foster relationships with our homeless population. Uh, our officers, uh, worked at several different events this year to, and distributed child identification safety kits, some of our police department, uh, swag like the stickers and stuff to the kids and getting out anything else and, uh, as like, uh, some of the safety, um, lights and things like that for the kids during Halloween, worked the lighted parade and the Christmas festivities as well. The keys, uh, crime statistics and data overview, uh, one of the biggest things that I noticed as soon as this, I printed this report out, there's, we had a significant, uh, drop in burglaries during two thousand twenty four. Um, as well as like robberies and some of these other things. And, you know, I've had some questions, uh, just from, you know, friends in the public, uh, and they're asking, well, what do you attribute tattoos or a piece of equipment that allowed you to do this? And the bottom line is it's staffing and, uh, that presence that our police officers provide when they're out there working traffic enforcement in our community or just responding to any calls. But, uh, the whole move is to get our officers out of the office as much as possible. The technology has definitely helped us to do that in a lot of different ways and allowed for the deployment of the officers in the right spots at the right time. And, uh, and the community service officer and the, and the community resource officer, and again, two key positions that have allowed our patrol force to focus on other things other than, uh, some of the homeless, uh, issues that we deal with where you can also see some of the different things, uh, with the, uh, criminal trespass calls, we again had another reduction in that. And then again, at the end, uh, you'll see that we've, uh, we've got a lot of, uh, traffic stops did see an uptick in, in, uh, traffic crashes, which are always, uh, key. Uh, really to look at that data and to see what exactly if we had any environmental effect factors into that and see what we can do to keep our roads safer. But again, our traffic stops are what uh, we're looking at doing out there and providing the, uh, service as far as stopping the vehicles that need to be stopped. Uh, our total calls for service in twenty-three was eighteen thousand. In two thousand twenty-four, we had twenty-three thousand. That's a thirty-one, uh, percent increase in calls for service. Again, I think a lot of that also goes along with, you know, the public sees us out there and they, they know that we're a resource they can count on and they contact us. Uh, one of the things I know in a private, uh, prior meeting, uh, I talked a little bit, uh, to the council about our homeless, uh, and some of our camping, uh, ordinances and the different camping, uh, spots that we have in the city. Uh, covered under that ordinance and I thought it was important to point out that, uh, we had six hundred ninety-four calls for service for that community resource officer in two thousand twenty-four. I suspected it was probably considerably higher than that. But again, that's just the raw data that, uh, we, we pull out of our records management system. Sometimes when he's out there on a call, something doesn't get designated to the community resource officer. So I can tell you, uh, this is a minimum number. Um, I think it's going to be probably truly a little bit higher. But, uh, one of the things that we did that, uh, our community resource officer broke down for us, and I think it's a good indication, uh, something that you were also wondering about was, uh, you know, how many of these calls are coming in each one of these camping locations? The Harbor Drive, uh, location, we had a hundred and twenty-six, uh, calls for service. Or as the McPherson Street and Union Avenue areas, right around City Hall here, we had thirteen. Um, the counts, uh, right now, uh, been trying to get back and I just don't have the ability to with, uh, our camera systems to go back into, uh, the summertime and be actual to see some of our nighttime uh, counts there, but we are moving in. We know where we were last year and the numbers, but we, uh, we were, we had fifteen campers during one of our counts, uh, about a week and a half ago at the, uh, Harbor Drive area. And, and again, it's kind of hard to, we're kind of counting bodies and cars and tents. And we don't really know exactly how many people in there. We're not going to go in there and just do a count to count somebody in sleeping inside the tent. But, um, so that's a rough number, uh, but again, fifteen between tents, vehicles. Uh, it does fluctuate a little bit through the night, but it's pretty consistent right in, right around that fifteen number. So that's a good, um, winter number, fall, you know, this winter time that we're in, and then we'll know that we will see an uptick into that. It could double, probably double is what we're going to be looking at in the summertime for that area in Harbor. Uh, McPherson Street and, uh, Union Avenue had about, just about ten, eight to ten, uh, total in these two areas right here. So no, again, uh, I, I guess right now I'd just like to open up, uh, particularly about that topic or any of the data that I've given you, um, you know, and allow you to ask some questions. The one thing that I, I definitely want to tell you is, is that what these, what this report shows and, and the things that we're going, you know, this is not, I don't want to give a time or the feeling that we've accomplished everything that we wanted to accomplish. We can do more, uh, and it's important, um, that, uh, we're able to provide this level of service. I feel that this is what our public wants. I know this is what our department wants. I'm never going to tell you that we have, you know, that we couldn't do a little bit more with another, an extra officer or anything like that. But as far as where we're at with the level that we have, we are doing what I feel is a good job and represents a great police department, not only because we're getting lateral officers that are coming here, but we've gone through a time where we've had turnover, uh. When I arrived here, there were some significant challenges that the department and the city were facing. And I think over the last four years, we definitely, uh, the department has grown. Um, it was an older department. It's not that way anymore. This is a younger department. Uh, and it's a younger department that I think shows the dedication, uh, and the value as far as the proud sense of community pride uh, that they have for the city of North Bend. Many of our officers live in the city. Uh, a lot of them went to school in the city, uh, and they're dedicated to providing the level you know, professional public safety that you and the public have grown accustomed to. So I'll turn it over to you for questions. Sorry about the extra three minutes there.
Um, the first one is, uh, how many, uh, full-time participants are granted?
So at this point. So we are closing out one of the grants on, but one of them had been the community resource officer. Uh, we also have we obviously have, well, I guess you could call, I don't know if you want to call that a grant, but one of the school resource officers, that's two we have. And then we have two other, um, grants that are currently, um, going. So I think we have a total. I think there's a total of four, but again, one of them will be falling off.
So, so three or four full-time participants are granted?
Yes.
And it's four right now and it'll be three or less.
Yes.
Um, simple question, what's there stand for?
Drug abuse resistance and education. Drug, drug awareness, I think is what it is.
So the last thing I want to zero in on a bit are, um, stat you called out for the, uh, community resource officers recorded calls. Does that mean those are called in or do those include the regular beep where he's hitting all the camping spots first thing in the morning and?
Those were all of his calls for the year.
And so it looks like just from rest stats, it looks like that's about twenty percent of those recorded calls are to the camping, I mean, rest or elsewhere.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Okay. The one thing here is that I looked through your seventeen items that you've done and I go through and I look at them and there's six that are went up. But two of them, one of them is driving while suspended, which means you're, you spot more people, right? So to me, that's a good thing. Uh, one of them that went up point four percent like that's one case. So to me, I'm going to say that's like a tie. And the other one is traffic stops, which are fifty-four percent higher. So out of them, I had eleven that's a negative, but went down. But really it's kind of like, uh, thirteen that it went down. So I would say overall, what the police department is doing is obviously working because everything's in a downward trend. So
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
The other thing too is when you're looking at single digits, the percentage is going to be really.
Oh, exactly. Down is down.
Yeah. Um, I have one question. How much, um, voting do you think you have a year?
I do not have a number on that, but I can get that. I don't know if our finance director.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
Yeah, it has, uh, what, our overtime, I, it's actually fluctuated. Uh, I would say that, uh, we're, we're in a less overtime than what we were four years ago. Um, it is still significant. I will tell you that just because of the amount of time we got people sick, we got people injured or vacations or anything like that. We have to backfill that, um, and so, and then we've also got, we've had a lot of people in training. So those officers, you know, they represent, they, they represent a number in our total staffing, but they require another officer to be in that car with them while they're in that training program. And that training process is just short of a year long. So.
Appreciate the information.
Yeah. There was overtime every year, right? To say that the police department is, uh, outstanding job of like saving the day. Can we talk about the ballot titles?
Uh, we have our finance director and, uh, our acting city reporter.
We talking about something?
He's kind of on, I, I know.
Not a list about this.
I know.
That's okay. They made, made a question.
Since I, you don't have a pamphlet on anything. I had, hopefully you've seen that. I have two ballot titles. One was a request for increased sewer fees. The title is essentially the exact same title in background as the, uh, title or the ballot measure we put out in November. The two changes are we take, we took the five percent off after the first three years and we specified a July one date for the uh, increases to come into effect. You just recently had one increase of two point five percent. Uh, but we left the numbers the same. A, because that's what we needed to do. That puts us a little bit behind from what we would have done in November because we would have increased to January one. But I didn't want to increase them either. Um, you know, we didn't come up with those numbers. You didn't hear multiple public hearings and multiple options because we can play with the numbers all over the place. And I believe those numbers are accurate. And so we stayed with those. The second ballot initiative is to change, ask for a charter amendment to remove the boarding, the majority of the electorate on a vote to change fees, uh, the so-called popular vote. It's just a majority of those voting to change that. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but that's basically the explanation there. We discussed that on the last, uh, work session and council meeting. And I think that is a key element. Um, uh, popular vote voted in. Let's stick with a popular voter. I don't think we have much chance of every increase in fees. So. But that's it for me.
What is with the, the charter, you know, that's not subject to the fee increase requirement. So potentially the popular vote could
Yes.
make that change.
The charter amendment is not subject to the majority of the electorate voting in favor. It is a
Same way it was put in.
Yeah, same way it was put in. It's a popular vote, vote, uh, standard majority of the, I mean, voters voting on that election.
Okay. Um, the next ballot, uh, measure that I'm going to discuss is the public safety fee. Um, prepared a uh, kind of a brief memo to outline some of the I think there are important discussion areas for, um, asking for an increase in the public safety fee. Uh, I started out just by giving, um, the council some estimates of, for instance, what a five, ten, um, or fifteen dollar increase would do in, in terms of providing additional resources, um, for the general fund. But I think more importantly is it's is very important to, when you're going out to ask for a fee increase to tell the tale of where we're at and how we've gotten here. Um, just kind of be honest about, um, kind of the current state of affairs. And so, um, what I wanted to start with in the memo, uh, was a look back at the police department's FTE. And when I say FTE, these are officers and sergeants. Um, I put in data in here that reflects back from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-four, and we've ranged anywhere from thirteen um, all the way up to eighteen. Now that's a, that's a long kind of span of years, um, but you can kind of see the fluctuation, um, in the officers and sergeants FTE. But there's more of a story. I mean, that is a point in time measurement um, that I did for each fiscal year. What I, what I then wanted to look at, and I think is important to note, is there's been turnover in these years. And so I went back and I looked at the turnover from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-four. And in two thousand and sixteen, we had one position and then we had several years where there was no turnover. And then we had the last five years where we've had pretty significant turnover. We've had at least three FTE leave or retire out of the force or out of the department each year or more in case like, and when you look at twenty fiscal, or fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we had six. Now let's look at the hiring part of that equation. In two thousand and sixteen, we had one and then in two thousand and seventeen, two, eighteen, three, nineteen, nothing, no positions were added. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty had two, none in twenty-one, and then four in two thousand and twenty-two, three in twenty twenty-three and four in two thousand and twenty-four. So what that, when you look at those two combined, the police, the police department's kind of been treading water. They've been losing positions and then adding positions. So they really haven't been growing a whole lot or, um, at least throughout the majority of this timeframe. And it, part of this is looking at the hiring process for the police department. It's a long process. They go through interviews and that takes up a lot of staff time. Once they found a candidate, there's background checks. It's my understanding that those background checks can take anywhere from two to three months to get the results back before that officer can come on and start. And then if it's a new officer, it potentially be, could be going to the police academy, which could be another eight months. So you can see it's it's an arduous process to get onto the police, um, onto the police department's staff. And so you've got turnover, you've got hiring, but then you've also got And so you've got turnover, you've got hiring, but then you've also got this arduous um hiring process that's occurring. Boy, I think it takes a lot of time and dedication um by the police department, by Cal, by um the Captain Perry um to go through this whole process and manage his department. Um, what you've seen, he also mentioned Cal starting kind of emit some turnover. Um, and what you see in the hiring and you see in the FTE numbers is a steady increase in the department's FTE over the years. Um, I would say twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, you've seen a steady uptick. Now, where we are today, we're about seventeen FTEs, or even higher than we were at the end of twenty twenty-four. And when I asked Cal, like, what's the optimal department staffing you'd want? He said nineteen to twenty. So we're on track to do that. And I said, why does, why is it nineteen to twenty? And that provides one sergeant and two officers for every shift. It also allows for flexibility to manage things like vacations, people being out sick and help to um cut down on overtime. So you can see that department is really being well-run, and we're starting to see the effects of um his leadership in that department over the last three years. Um, I think they've done a lot of work um to build a lot of trust in that department. And you can see that reflective, not only in the applications that we're getting and experienced hires, but also just the steady increase in his department levels. I think also during this time, um it's important to note that uh we've gone through collective bargaining. And um we've gone through one round of that. Um, I think through that process, we ended up with a better collective bargaining agreement. There was a lot of points of clarification that we came to agreements on. Um, and then eventually we came to an agreement that both the union and the city could live with. And so when you look at kind of, you know, one of the most important things in that collective bargaining agreement are the cost of living adjustments. I've provided information on what cost of living adjustments have happened in the police department. And you can see year by year, it's ranged anywhere from none, at least in two thousand and eighteen, all the way up to four percent lately. In any of those years, you don't see any significant increases that I would say just call out, wow, this is just, you know, the city's just giving away cost of living, unreasonable cost of living adjustment. All of them are reasonable, particularly when you look at inflation over that period of time. We know that inflation has been over twenty percent. And when you add all those up, those cost of living adjustments between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-four were over, were over twenty percent there too, but kind of tracking with what we've seen just in the general price increases. During this time, we've also seen um increases in uh the required purse contributions. And there's two levels, whether someone's in um the tier one, tier two category, depending on their hiring date, or whether they're an officer, police fire, there's different rates, but those have also been increasing, and we're expecting another increase um for beginning of next fiscal year, twenty twenty-six. Um, also, I've included, just so you can see, the percentage of police department expenditures as a percentage of the general fund. And I did that over the years, two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-four. And you can see that that ranged anywhere from about forty-one to at least in to, you know, almost fifty percent in twenty twenty. Um, but I think it's important to note that that forty percent or that, you know, in that range go back to the staffing levels. We weren't always at the optimal levels. So if we're at seventeen FTE now and the optimal level somewhere between nineteen and twenty FTE in the department, it's it's easy to see that the police department as a percentage of the general funds expenditures is gonna go up. And when you look at that, I kind of did an analysis and I said, hey, I think it'd be somewhere around fifty, fifty-one percent of the general fund up from forty-one percent. So about a ten percent increase to add those additional positions to bring it up from the fifteen FTE that we were at the end of uh twenty twenty-four. And so I say all this information because I think it's important to justify why we're asking or going out and asking for more money to fund public safety. And we haven't asked or ever increased it since the public safety fees been put in place. It's been fifteen dollars this whole time. Um, I went through and just my, like, I started out this uh presentation just talking about the different levels. Um, I concluded that you could ask for um a five dollar increase. And that would help uh fund and and be a reasonable ask um to increase that um public safety fee um by five dollars, given that you have not asked in so long. And we've seen such dramatic changes in um the costs associated with providing uh police safety. So with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Um.
Yeah, we've discussed making a police services thing.
The our ordinance and the ballot measure both dedicate the public safety fee to funding the police department. Not has nothing to do with the fire department and our ordinance and or um the prior ballot measure. I mean, we it it still funds part of the city, but it it is designated as for the police department, public safety fee in our ordinance. Sorry. No, that's okay.
So I hope I hope that uh hope that um some of this gets pushed to a page on the website as opposed to just the things I have two asks.
Mm-hmm.
That's one is to on that online documentation where we're guiding people to why we want to say yes to these things. The ask is first so that people know what you're thinking about, uh because none of us are reading anymore, right? You know, I mean, I read, you know, to sort of have our ask immediately. But the second thing I'd like to see is I'd like to see when we, particularly when we uh split out the FTE, what this term would look like if we hadn't gotten a bunch of grants. And so, for example, uh to in twenty twenty-four, three twenty-four, we had four grant funded positions. We would only be able to have a lot more or less police officers, right? So we would have a marked decrease in our force amongst all of the other changes. And so I think that if you can do that, an extra line about that that shows what we've gotten through grants for that table uh and then for the uh police expenditures as well. Because, you know, as we get grants, our budget swells a little bit and then it goes away as well. So I think the the percentages are 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 useful, but not quite as useful in this case. So that would be my my two guesses. I think more confusing feature that would be me. I just think uh having a line where it's like this is not going to be taxes. This is coming from grants and they go away. But the school board, like the the school person is not like it's the school base for that person. So there's it's different funding, I think. I don't know if they are. Think so much. Why is it granted? Oh, yeah, they go and they could go away. I guess the point is perhaps grant is not the word, but the fund not coming from our tax base.
Yeah, okay.
So so to make it crystal clear, the school board and the school district does not pay a hundred percent of the school resource officer hall again. That's a misnomer. Uh, they do reimburse us for uh the personnel cost. Uh, but we carry train costs, we carry the vehicle costs uh of area supply call. The second we get in submitted for uh grant dollars, um and so uh I hope refine the rest of that funding that has kind of worked out with this industry on the second school resource officer.
So the second, is that what we're talking about? The second resource uh s- school resource and and just to kind of go back, we have to hire somebody to be able to put somebody into the school. So that's the first thing that's had to happen, had to happen. And this has been an ongoing process now for about a year uh to get us to this point. So we've already had that person with us training to be able to release an experienced officer into the school. Uh, so all that training time cost, that's borne by the city. Uh, the um the actual uh equipment, uh we spend roughly about two thousand dollars uh just in what they have on them. Uh, and the gear that they carry, uh the car obviously is is a big expense. Um, and I think uh, you know, the other parts of that hiring process too, as well as far as doing the backgrounds, sending an officer, having them do nothing for, you know, but of do conducting that background for two weeks is another expense that is involved in that. Uh, and the the remaining, any overtime that he's working, again, those are usually the things that come back to the police department as far as that funding. Does that answer your question? Yep.
We used to have two resource officers when we went down to the ones that does this or change like there.
They were paying fifty percent of each officer, then we asked them to combine for a hundred percent, reduce down to one officer. But again, that was the personnel costs for general services um are separate. And so that's why it had gone down to one um at that time that occurred um uh prior to my arrival, but that's the history on that position. The um uh during the um upper renewal maximum debt, as we had asked staff to put together a complete, you know, what what services in kind, otherwise monetary donations do we provide the school district? And so these additional costs, which is why I'm so familiar with them, actually came out of the department's system. These are all the things that the taxpayers actually pay for, that the district hasn't paid for. Uh, the response from the chairman uh at the meeting was great, keep it coming. Um, uh, but the reality is is uh we're now before you asking for cuts because they can keep it coming.
Mark, did you have something you wanted to ask for, Jerry?
Uh, I I do have one comment that I guess that, and I don't know what the if if there was like an ask of the council here, but these these ballot titles have been set for publication. And so there's no, there's no changes to these ballot titles at this point. And so should, for instance, the safety, public safety fee pass, um then I then I believe the process would be if it passes, then at that point, the council can consider they would then have the authority by the voters to increase the fee. When you go through the public hearings process, assuming that you get the voter approval. A a different option, if the council wanted, is to to actually set what those fees are now. Or not now, I mean, we're we're past the filing deadlines for the May the May election. If the council wants to to actually have what those fees are and and send those fees to the voters, then the council would need to scrap this uh ballot measure and 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 redo it and and put it on the uh November election.
You're saying you wanted to change from public safety fee to a specific name?
To a specific dollar amount. Like it doesn't have a dollar amount in it. The current ballot title does not have a specific dollar.
Well, we can split it underneath that card. We don't need to say public service fee of five dollars.
We 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 can't change the ballot titles at this point.
Well, we can change what's underneath, like what our descriptor, correct?
Yes. Well, we we've published countless of that, all of it. So so we're in the, basically, we have until, is it the twentieth, the file, the file. So right now, we're in the publish where the the public has to challenge. And so what, uh, because this this the deadlines are the deadlines and and we got it to you, well, we got it to you. The um, as the city attorney say, you can't go in and say, do you want to raise the 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 police or the public safety fee uh by five dollars? Okay. So if the public were to approve and authorize you, then under home rule, you have to then set the fee. And so the staff recommendation, I think, is what I heard was five dollars
Five dollars.
increase. And so that staff recommendation is what's going to be publicized on the web. What the council actually does, uh, if if you're given that opportunity, uh, will occur uh after the the vote occurs.
But ballot title is is
General.
Financial.
Yes.
But you're just gonna blanketly ask the public, do you want to increase the public safety?
That's correct.
That's the statement that's in there now, correct? We did not have the chance to really have this discussion to know what, how much to put into there in that.
Yeah, at this point, at this point, it's not so much really about what passes or not, but that we're showing that we're charged.
Yes, that was the discussion in the strategic planning session. Cause we discussed and showed at that strategic planning session that the night we were asking for the ballot, we showed the impacts of five dollars, ten dollars, fifteen dollars. Uh, and so the direction we were given was go ahead and publish the ballot titles. Um, and so we we generated that, short of having called yet another special call meeting to say five dollars. The likelihood statistic based on Ralph, how many has to turn out on this?
Well, a minimum of twenty-one hundred voters, just the because of the I think we we have only have seventy got over seven thousand registered voters. So we see in fifty one, fifty point one percent, if you had a hundred percent. Um, the example I gave you was November's ballot measure, we had sixty five percent turnout, we would have needed seventy-eight percent in favor on that specific election to have votes sold.
But giving better odds right now because you choose red or black?
It makes us think about the fact that if you want to try and do this more specifically, or again, if they fail, like, would we want to put us a big number on for the November? Because I do feel like, again, this is good to collect data, but it's not gonna, I'm gonna have a hard time to think. Public service fee, you know, I don't know what it is versus, I know, like, do I agree to a five dollar monthly? It's like, I just, if I'm a voter, you're gonna say no to everything. So, but we'll see. But it's still, it does, it doesn't matter if we know the outcome. We still have to try in as many ways as possible because you know, the clips are gonna arrive. Well, and again, we'll have data on who said yes to what too, which one of us would cut, so we have to be cut.
Those cuts will be proposed for your July first budget.
Yeah.
But I think, but I think you do have the option, though, of delaying until November as well. I think that's what Mark is bringing up. If you don't want it on May, you can push it.
Sort of what I understood in posting of the titles was, you know, at least that gives you the ability to move in and wanted to, you know, all those things at that. Our our strategy is the one I think that if you don't get on the May ballot, you can't have the discussion. If there is a certain point that the staff has to back out, then it's it's over to you as the council to make it forward. And so uh those are communications and conversations that you have to have with the general public constituency. Um, uh, it gives us an opportunity to hone in on communication. For instance, in the next day or two, we'll have the initial memo that goes out to staff so that staff doesn't get blindsided that, you know, the proposed budget is going to have significant cuts. We're not in, you know, there there's a reason, for instance, I sent you, say, the COO's bag uh pension to show you that they were, you know, almost you know, two hundred and seventy plus percent of their uh their their uh salary, their payroll. You know, um, Big Midville just put out the document today that says their proposed budget in a city of thirty-four thousand has a ten percent cut to their general class services. This is a statewide, it is happening everywhere. It is quite the nominal fact. We've had twenty-three and a half percent CPI in the last five years. It's as real as real comes. And we we've got, you know, we don't want the general fund reserve to go below two million because then you can't make the gap between uh budget time and taxes coming in. General fund reserve to go below two million because then you can't make the gap between, uh, budget time and taxes coming in. So. The, the, we've kicked the can as far down and the grants are starting to dry up, um, astronomically quick. They're getting froze throughout, um, the state federal level. So that's just the reality.
Look, how back we get to know their fee then?
We can, we can get to them pretty quickly. They're, they're a little bit. Well, a lot shorter than the public safety. I, I put a lot of work into the public safety fee just because of, uh. How that one came about to get on to the, uh, onto the city's fee structure. And I know it's, uh, it's an important one because it's, it deals with public safety.
Yeah.
And it's important to people and.
What's your next thought?
The next one is, uh, a new parks and recreation fee. And, um, this one is proposing a fee. To cover, um, three different things. One would be to provide, uh, annual funds, uh, to implement the, or help to implement the parks master plan recommendations. And so. If you remember back to that document, it had at least four million dollars of need in the next, um, I think. Ten years that need to be, um, funded for, uh, safe parks. Um, it also includes. Um. Uh, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, for pool operations. And I included that one in there because the, uh. The levy is gonna sunset and this would. Replace that, um. Uh, for, and, and at a lower level, um, to, and to support the pool. And then also an additional four hundred thousand dollars just for parks operations. Again, thinking about that general fund budget. And trying to. Shore it up. And so those are the three areas. Um, again, this would cover. Just looking at this, it would cover about fifty thousand dollars annually for the purpose of implementing the, uh, parks master plan. Um, pool levy operations and then park operations. And for that. Um, I propose in here an eighteen dollar per month fee billed through utility customers. It would raise about that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually needed. And again, the special levy would go away, uh, on the pool. Uh, look at this.
Um, the service variety and the, you know, compared to voting, I think, the police wise.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah. Um, and also I, this is another ballot title where. Um, that parks, that eighteen dollar fee is not specifically cited within the ballot title. Um, it was, again, not really knowing for sure what council's. Direction might be on that one. It's, it's more of a generic ballot title, um, but the recommendation here is eighteen dollars, I think, would cover. Each of those three components. And then the last one is a new dog park. Uh. Uh, fee. And so. This would cover the construction. And annual. Um, maintenance and operations of anywhere from a seven thousand to ten thousand square foot dog park. Um, at a location yet to be determined. Um, this one's a little bit unique in that, um. The fee is included in the ballot title. Um, I estimated it would be a two dollar per month utility fee or included on utility bills. But only for four years. Because that would raise enough money to pay back the construction costs. But then if that fee were to drop down to a dollar twenty five after that. It would cover the operation. And so a big part of it, or some of that fee is really just dedicated towards paying off the construction. It didn't make any sense to carry that fee forward. You know, with, without having to pay, repay the construction. So it was kind of a mixed model. Um. And this was really kind of out of the. Um, I guess the news about the airport's closure of the dog park and no volunteers being able to.
Room with dog, it moved to twenty and then two dollars for facility service fee?
Yes. For four years. I, I like the number two. I, I do. It's very specific. I.
Oh, the, the two dollars seems reasonable versus things I don't know what they are.
I agree.
So what if they're gonna pass me the vote, right? So we'll be simply checking maybe. I mean, that's the, that's what we need anyways. Very long town, right? We want to let people, let them show up.
You know, we have other people vote.
Yeah.
Kind of begin to.
That's the problem.
Yeah, did you? There's likelihood of meeting the. Ballot requirement is presidential elections.
Yeah.
Every four years. It's, there's nothing else unless you come up with something else.
We didn't even do that.
Exactly. You did it. So.
Yeah.
But, but I'm saying the only likelihood.
But I'm not, let's go.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next title business is looking over tomorrow again. Okay.
Yeah, the first thing is you've got a ceremonial swearing in of a full old officer Benjamin Martin. Uh, this is a lateral officer, so this is a ceremonial. Uh, this is our first lateral since I've been here from the city.
What does that mean lateral? Just.
Oh, lateral means we don't have to have the canopy. So we don't have to, other than a, a very brief time out on the streets. And he kind of already knows his streets because he's been backing us up. Vice versa. So, yeah. So when you get a lateral, it's actually a huge benefit.
Your leg time to.
Precisely. Uh, on the consent counter, the chief has a request for training and duty ammunition. The chief's here to answer any questions if you have any.
But.
Any questions?
We're in fire.
Oh, so we, uh, use a range up on the waterboard. It's technically owned by the city of Kus Bay. Uh, we have a range and, uh. Enhancement fee, I guess, basically that we pay to the city of Kus Bay. Very minimal, uh, amount. And so it's basically just a cooperative effort that. Uh, it's been around. Quite some time, uh, that more than two seven range, anyone? The range?
Yeah.
So it's, uh, anyway, up there and, um, it's a really nice facility. It's gone through a lot of improvements. I was involved with a lot of those improvements, my time in Kus Bay, um, and we. Right now, uh, we try to at least have quarterly, uh, firearms training. And then some of that training is also, uh, includes, uh, like the, uh. I just forgot the name of it, but it's basically a digital system to where we actually do that indoors without firing live ammo. Um, and DPS ST provides that system. They break down to us at least once a year. So.
Do you borrow it for getting into ammunition angle?
No, we don't. Uh, we haven't, uh, we, I take that back, probably not as an ex, as extensive as, as an order as this one. I think the last order that we had, we purchased, uh. Um, was some handgun ammunition. And that would probably. I think that was probably two years ago that we did that. So this is something we just kind of constantly and. Also now that we've ramped training up a lot more, we're doing a lot more training, uh, firearms training in particular than we were two years ago. So. This is something where we look at, and then we also try to project, um. What type of specialized training we have. We have one member that's on the emergency response team, uh, with the county. It's like a SWAT. The county's version of SWAT team, uh, and they have special training. And when they go to classes, uh, out, you know, say in Eugene or Portland or wherever. Some of those classes requires them to take a lot more ammunition than normal.
Well, they're getting a pretty good deal, so.
Yeah.
That's right.
I think we all, we'd like to be able to buy at that price. And try to make sure that happens.
Range, um, in the armory is still usable?
Uh, it, I don't. Think so, but don't pull me on that. I know we used to do some training on that, but yeah, uh, a lot of those, uh. Systems they use for like a twenty two conversion. Yeah. Yeah. So it's a little bit smaller, but, uh, we haven't used that range now for several years.
On the next item, uh, on the consent, this is a approval, uh, temporary genitorial services agreement from the office. Men's public library. Um, I've got three department heads out, so, um, we're up to pitch any for some of them. This is one of them. Uh. Uh, this is a sixty day temporary service. Originally they were going to put out RFP, uh, out, uh, but this is a negotiated sixty day. Uh, service for free to, uh, give, uh, Bay area enterprises, um, basically, uh. Final bite at the apple.
It's sort of amazing for a temporary decree. Or contract of thirty five days employment. Is that based on the other contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, they have a new, uh, technical director over there, um. Other agencies have also changed, so. Give them, give them sixty days to try. Um, any questions on that? Uh, the next is also from the library. Uh, this is more housekeeping. This is their annual service agreement with, um, uh, Vivileca. I think I pronounced that right, maybe not, I don't know. Um, but it's all about. Yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm getting this close to like, yeah, uh, it's on page forty two, uh, in here and, uh. Uh, it's gone through. Each of the years I've been here, so. There you go. There's any changes? Uh, from, uh, any, so anything, anyone want to pull anything for the consent? Okay. And just as you remind our consent, um, there's no discussion on motions. That's for over to the boarder. Just for a second, that passes. Um. Uh, public comment if there is any, then we move on to, uh, resolution number three, three, six, two. Authorizing the city to apply for a government grant for the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. This is on page forty five. Um, Stephanie, uh, is also another department head that's, um, out. Um, Ralph has worked, uh, consistently with this, um, as, as I. Um, this is, um, seeking, uh, funding towards, uh, the next phase, continue trying to phase, um, and get grant funds for our. Um. Park, pocket park corner. And this one is towards the restroom. Am I correct?
Uh, parking lot.
Parking lot.
Parking lot and restroom.
You got it.
Yeah, those parking lot.
Yeah, I think I spent most of my time on the restroom.
Okay.
And so, uh, part of this requires a resolution, um. And so, uh. And is the resolution in here?
Let's see the draft.
Is there a draft one? Uh, yeah, here it is. Uh, page one twenty three. I thought so, just, I, I think. I think I, I, I think I wrote that one too. There, yeah. There'd be a draft resolution, it's, it would be just approving the mayor to, uh, sign it. Um. Uh, if, uh, knowing that the mayor's gonna be out, you can always change that, the council president, doesn't matter. Uh, but we just have to have a resolution. Otherwise we can use her stamp with her email party. Okay. So, uh, all good with number six?
Yeah.
All right. Um, number seven, this is the reappointment to the Kuzbey North Bend Water Board. We went ahead and put out. Um, uh, stating that there was a opening. Obviously, uh, Mr. Solars has been with us. Um, and, uh, he was the only applicant that came in and said that, um, he would like to be reappointed. And so, um. This would be a reappointment of Mr. Solars to, uh. Did I say his last name right?
No.
Solars. Sorry, Lars. Thank you, thank you for, the large, um, for, uh, correcting me on that. Um, so that, um, uh, would be a council appointment. Um, it is the will of the council and so the appointment.
All right.
Any questions on number seven? All right. Um, number eight is authorization to hire HGE architects for professional landscape, um, architectural services. Page one thirty. This is also specific to, uh, finishing the next phase of the park. Um. And so, um, um, Ralph, did you work on this one with Stephanie?
I did.
Okay.
The visitor center, right?
Yes.
So that. The whole project's been presented kind of, it, it, council still gets the name, but it's the hub plaza. So. Hub Plaza. Um. So HGE, I requested they provide architectural services quotes for actually four phases of this. There's a reason for that. Uh. The. Pocket Park segment. Is partially funded under the T-Mobile grant. We have to expend those funds through the T-Mobile grant. Part of November. Something this year. Um, I can't remember if it's the first or mid month, but.
Whatever.
Uh, so that one we needed to get activated on. That one's in front of you today. Um, have been in the business from the consulting end, kind of standard services is approximately twenty percent. So you can. And our constra- estimated construction cost on that project is a hundred and thirty thousand, of which T-Mobile is funding. Fifty thousand, uh. Regardless, we also applied for a grant. For the ADA access way from the parking lot up to the visitors information center and. We applied, we didn't, well, this latest grant involves the restroom. Um, we intended on building the restroom along with ADA access. When we applied to travel Oregon, travel Oregon will not fund restrooms. So. As we put all this grant together, we kind of had to break these segments into architectural fees. So the reason you see. Four architectural fees. Is different funding possibility. Someone will fund this, won't fund that. But the bottom line is the twenty one thousand eight hundred and thirty, if I remember correctly, because it's not here on my page. Uh. Is for the T-Mobile Plaza. Paul, pardon me.
Uh, uh, you're, you're not having any restroom, so you just have to.
Well, there is, there are restrooms at the visitors information center at this point. I mean, part of the intent of that is to be able to hold festivities while the. Existing VS, V I C's closed. Um, so we're looking at a, a s- separate public restroom. Uh, open twenty four seven. We're all in tents groups. No, we're asking you actually to approve the, just the phase one for the T-Mobile. Grant. Uh. Because that is a project, we have grant monies in hand. And we'd come back to you later as other ones come in, or possibly if we have. Enough firearms in the fire that we can fund. The other phases.
And in a nutshell, as, as Ross says, there's like three grant applications going. We got the bid to cover, but we piecemeal them and put them appropriately into different buckets for different grant applications. Um, and then the other resolution that's earlier on is one of those. Um, so there's T-Mobile, this one, and then. Travel Southern Oregon.
Travel, travel Oregon.
Travel, there's three grants. Hard to keep all the. Visitor ones, because they all sort of kind of have the same name. It gets confusing sometimes, but this one is, uh, specifically the T-Mobile Plaza. Um, in order.
Cause we have a funding and a completion date on that project, so. Need to get that one go- going down the road.
Any additional questions for staff on that one? All right, um, we, um, do not expect an executive session, and so the administrative report and committee reports. Um. Our council comments, um, we'll be rescheduling the, uh, VCB. There's, um. You imagine a lot of illness going around. And so, uh, it's hitting our staff as well. And so they'll be rescheduled. Um, and then we go back to our regular agenda, which says number eight. It's back to you, sir.
I guess we're done. I did faster. It was the same ballot thing.
Uh, hello, sir. How are you? Uh, hello, sir, how are you?